Thank you. All right, so this, I'm going to call the meeting to order and this is the City Council Work Session for Minutrista for March 1st. And two items are on our agenda this evening for our work session and that's roads discussion and our nuisance property discussion. So first, I'll do roll call. So when I call your name, just say, "I'm here." I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. Council members present: Anne McGregor.
Here.
Kathleen Refkin.
Here.
Pam Mortensen.
Here.
John Trumperland.
Here.
And also with us, our city administrator, Mike Baroni. Mike, we can't hear you. We still can't hear you. I know he's on.
I am here, can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, great. The Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
Our Chief of Police Paul Falls.
Here.
Our Community Development Director Dave Abel.
I am here.
And Finance Director Brian Grimm.
Here.
Director of Administration Ally Palphus.
Here.
And our City Clerk Chris Lindquist.
I am here.
And our Engineers with us this evening, Allison Fousky.
Here.
Adam Gabois.
Here.
And our Attorney Ron Beatty.
Here.
All right, we are all here. So first, on our agenda is a discussion of our roads. And just kind of a little bit of background, we started discussing the roads that we're going to be doing next year. Back a couple of years ago, we started discussing these earlier than we had been in the past. And there's a number of reasons why. One, we wanted to give ample time to our residents, notifying them that there would be special assessments. We also wanted to have an opportunity to have neighborhood meetings, to meet with them and get their input. And then the other reason is because we wanted ample time to be able to get the bids out in the February-March timeframe. That's the best bidding time. So that's why we're starting our discussions tonight. And I'm going to hand it over to Allison, I think.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the introduction, Mayor Whalen. I think this is a good discussion to start right now. Certainly, from a staff level, we anticipate that this will be a somewhat iterative process with the council, with this being the first discussion of, we're not sure how many, but we'd like to take this opportunity, get some information in front of the council for potential 2022 projects. So included in the memo, the first two items included in there are from the last project planning information packet. And that packet, if council recalls, is kind of a combination of information from the city's pavement management report, as well as pulling in some of those challenging areas that Public Works has come up with and trying to give council an all-in-one place to go and look at potential project information. So these first two project areas are the Jennings Cove area, which is removal and replacement, and then full-depth reclamation of various streets in the County Road 110 Sunny Fields Road area. So the recommended budget that's shown in the memo are based on the 2018 estimates. But then, as we were moving through the budgeting process over the last couple of years, we added, we had some discussions and ended up adding, for these particular projects, it was around the neighborhood of 22% to reflect some higher bid prices that have been realized since 2018. And then we've also built in some additional contingency and then inflation of around 4% per year for inflation. So those numbers, and we can continue to revisit those numbers as we see numbers fluctuate year to year, depending on what particular component of a street improvement project you're looking at, whether it's pavement, whether it's pipe. You know, we'll certainly keep on top of it, but just that's a little bit of the background on the budget for those first two areas shown in the memo in the work session packet. The other three items, the other three maps that are included in the packet are potential mill and overlay areas. And those that were identified in that 2018 pavement management report. So these streets were selected based on their pavement condition index or PCI that was calculated in 2017 during the last inspection that was done on city streets. We do have coring for one of those streets, which is Eagle's Nest Drive, confirming that that particular street is a candidate for mill and overlay. But as noted in the staff report is, any potential mill and overlay streets for 2022, we would recommend that we get corings to determine if they are still a candidate for that particular treatment. There is one correction that I am aware of, on page four in your packet, under the Northeast Area map. Game Farm Circle should not be included on that map because it was overlaid in 2020. I had the other streets taken out of that map, but not Game Farm Circle. So that's one correction to note. Also included was Appendix B from that 2018 pavement management report. And that was to provide the council with the pavement condition indices and the 2018 cost estimates. So if council, if there's some mill and overlay project areas that council would like to consider for 2022, as I indicated earlier, this is, you know, this is an iterative process when we start looking at street improvement project planning, so we can look at updating some estimated costs based on some recent pricing, because we are starting to see bid openings already this year. Not necessarily for a mill and overlay project, those tend to come a little bit later, but certainly we'll go and take a look at what we're seeing for pavement prices and some of these bid openings to see if we're, if we need to, how much we would need to adjust those numbers. I also did a quick calculation this afternoon to look at where the projected road fund balance would be at the end of 2021. And Finance Director Grimm can certainly interject if I have any of my numbers incorrect here. But I was looking at, the 2021 levy was $725,000, with the end-of-year balance at 2020 at $301,000. And then council may recall, we did a state aid payment of just over $944,000 for the Halsted Reconstruction Project, which brought our 2021 end-of-year to just over $1.97 million. And looking at where we're at for our 2020, excuse me, our 2021 local street improvement project that's currently out for bid, that one's estimated at $1.64 million for just the street improvements. And then we also have that Langwood Mill and Overlay at $95,000. So that would put our projected end-of-year balance for 2021, just around $235,000. So that would be, you know, if there's no overlay work done this year, that $235,000 could be added to whatever the council wants to consider for a roads levy for 2022. And that's what we would be looking at for budget. So I'm hoping that helps the council with, you know, some of these first discussions on potential project areas. And with that, I'd like to turn over to the council for discussions, and Adam and I are available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Allison. So real quick, could you maybe explain the difference between, because there's two different kinds of overlays. There's an overlay, and we've done that, we did that on Game Farm, Retreat Circle, Fielding Trail, we did it, they're one-and-a-half-inch overlays. But then you've also talked about mill and overlays. So maybe you could just quickly refresh everyone's memory, more so for Anne and Kathleen, in terms of what that is, and how long does that extend the life of those roads?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. So an overlay just means you're simply putting that additional inch and a half of pavement on top of what's already there. And so we do those, we do overlays typically in a rural residential area where there's no curb and gutter, because you don't have that, that, we call it the lip, where the pavement and the gutter meet. You can, when you're doing a mill and overlay, you have to mill down a distance so that when you put the new blacktop on top, the blacktop matches up to that concrete gutter line. So that's kind of the difference between the overlay and the mill and overlay. Now with an overlay, we do have driveways, for example, that we have to match into. So there is some milling component with those overlays, but not to the extent of what you would see with a curb and gutter. As far as extending pavement life, you know, that certainly varies on the condition of the pavement that you're putting the overlay on top of. Now if it's, you know, if it's a, if it's a street that has sand and drain tile and you, because water's one of the biggest challenges on these, on maintaining the condition of the road, you could certainly look at getting another 10, 12, 15 years out of a mill and overlay, if you have good conditions underneath there. Now there are some, some roads out there, like for example, Hosta Drive that we did last year, we put an overlay on it and that'll, that'll serve us well, but it not, certainly, you know, certainly not to the extent of the 10-to-12-year range. You would, you would see it, those cracks reflecting through, so they would come up through that new pavement. But that's, you know, that's kind of around the timeframe that we're looking for with a good overlay application would be between 10 and 12, 10 and 15 years.
Thank you. Okay. Council, I'm sure you have questions. So we'll start with John, how's that?
Sounds good. Allison, a couple of questions. One on page two of our packet, which is the Jennings Cove layout, which was from our September last year info as well. It's projected at 731. And I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Then in the actual Appendix B, where you've got all of the different streets laid out, all those Jennings Cove ones only add up to $482,000. Is that big difference, simply the change in cost from 2018 to today, plus any other overhead that you've additionally projected in?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the change between that Appendix B number and the numbers that are shown in that first graph, on the page two of the packet, that's exactly correct, is that we put in that multiplier after, after the 2018 project was bid, and bid prices came in quite, quite a bit higher. We had some discussion with the council after the fact to look at adding, I think the bids came in like 18% higher. And so that was the first multiplier that we, that we used from that Appendix B number. And then we also started looking at, you know, inflation certainly is part of it. And we also talked a little bit about adding a little bit more of a buffer for contingency when we're looking at budget numbers, because the scope of the project can vary and we have such little information, we added that 5%. So it did start to accumulate quite a bit from Appendix B to what you see on page two of the packet.
That's quite a number, quite a difference. So then the follow-up question, but, go ahead.
I was going to say, it is, but we, and you know, we've also seen the bituminous prices have jumped around quite a bit. I mean, Adam can certainly jump in here if he has any, any additional experience that he, he cares to share with us. But from what I've seen in communities that I've been working in is, you know, we are seeing these oil prices, these mixes that we're using on these roadways, the costs are going up a little, you know, more than what we see for inflation of 3% to 4%. So they do jump around quite a bit, and so it gets to be a bit of a challenge when you start looking at, how much do you want to budget year to year? We certainly don't want to over-budget and then have, you know, a lot of money left at the end of the year that we could have done more work. But staff also doesn't want to under-budget so that, you know, we're looking at bidding a project and then all of a sudden, we don't have enough money in the budget to do the work that was anticipated.
Yeah, Allison, I'll just, I'll just add real quick, Councilmember Trumperland, with our previous projects that we've had, 2018, 2019, 2020, and now as we are bidding 2021 here in the next two weeks, we have a really good historical database of prices. And so back in September, when, or even earlier, when we talked about these multipliers and inflating these, adjusting these prices, that was kind of based off that one big year where we saw a big change in price. And now we have some more data, so we can revisit these estimates and make sure we're still in line. But it certainly seems like a big jump from 2018, but that's because that, that year really affected it.
Okay, thank you. Then a follow-up question. Then in the theory, is the rest of Appendix B, are the numbers that are listed for all the overlays or mill overlays, are they also profoundly affected?
I think the mill and overlay, I don't think we'll see as much of a jump in those numbers, because of the type of the mixed design, the pavement type that you use for mill and overlay versus a reclamation or a full pavement removal and replacement. Now certainly, like Adam indicated, we do need to go and take a look back, because we did see 2018 numbers jump. But that's, I don't anticipate it would be to the extent that we see for some of these, for these other types of projects with a different mixed design.
Yeah, they're going to go up for sure. And with the new pavement report that we put together, we'd use that historical pricing over the past few years and get those numbers dialed in.
So I guess, another question on that then, if, would it, if we know the numbers will change, even though they're not the significant numbers of the full-depth removal, but if we know they're going to go up, in theory, and I'd rather overestimate versus underestimate, I personally would like for you to add a column and just add whatever, if it's 5%, 7%, 10%, just max those numbers out, so that I've got a more realistic feel. We've got all these roads to look at, and if we get down to taking one from here and one from there, I would be more comfortable with having a more accurate number. And in conjunction with that, Allison, I know you responded to my email about the file, I would really like to see this file, being all the streets are listed in an Excel format, I would like a column added as for the color, instead of not just having the color on the street, but actually put a color column in. And then that would allow me, if it's in Excel, I can sort and dice this, I can sort the colors together, and within the colors, I could sort the PCIs to get a feel for which ones. And I know the PCI is only a visual inspection, but it would give me a better feel for, within the different areas, what streets really are probably needing it more than others. And I know the coring then may also decide, well, these have gone too far. But I just would feel more comfortable having a spreadsheet that I could work with, instead of scanning down all of these pages, and pretty soon, all the streets just become a blur to me. That's what I had at this time.
Thanks, John. Yeah, good, good point, thank you. So I'll move on to Anne, what kind of questions do you have and comments?
Thank goodness you started with John. And all that he said, because yes, it does become a blur, so I loved everything he said. Other than that, I need the same thing.
All right. Any, any, so one of the things I do want to discuss here today too is, and I think those comments that John made are very good, and I think we need more accurate, up-to-date numbers, as well as having it formulated, as John was saying. The other discussion is, do we want to think about, and maybe if we get this in a different format, where we, where it's laid out a little bit differently, it will become more apparent. But do we want to do mill and overlays and overlays next year and not do a reconstruct or a reclamation? And the reason I say that is, I'm just asking, is because once you let a road go too far, then it's no longer an overlay or a mill and overlay, now all of a sudden, it's gone too far and it has to move into the reconstruct or reclamation category. So the thought originally with the overlays especially was, it would help us, at a fraction of the cost, reduce, move some of these roads out 10, as Allison said earlier, 10 to 15 years, which would give us some time to kind of catch up on the other roads. So that's one thing I think we should discuss and decide where, what we want to do with that thought. So I'll go, I don't know if that generates any more questions, but I'll go to, Kathleen, I'll go to you.
Allison, so the costs are going up every year. So if we wait to do Jennings another year, do you foresee the costs going up substantially? Do you think it's going to kind of level off? What are your guesses on what's going to happen? Because my concern is if we do the mill and overlays, Jennings Cove gets another, you know, $100,000 more expensive next year if we wait.
That's a great question, Councilmember Refkin. And typically, we estimate 3% to 4% per year. But the challenge that we've had in estimating street improvement costs in the last few years is the variability on some of the refineries, on where the oil comes from. So for example, you get the storms down in Texas, that, or even, like, for example, in Louisiana, when they had the hurricanes down through there, if they take out any of the, any of the oil rigs out there, that really affects our prices. And so that, that's the biggest challenge, is if we see something really, it's typically a weather event, sometimes it's political, but something to that extent that really drives up those bituminous prices, that's where we, we run into the biggest challenge in estimating these prices. So barring a major weather event or political event, we would just simply budget 3% to 4% per year increase.
When you say political, what's an example of what you mean for that?
So something to do with OPEC and the pricing that comes from obtaining oil overseas.
Okay. And so Kathleen, kind of FYI, if you look at the 731, $731,000 number for the Jennings Cove area, a 3.5% increase on top of that is around, between $25,000 and $26,000, $25,500, just kind of give you an idea.
So which roads would we do the mill and overlays then, if we don't do Jennings? Like what are the top priorities?
Allison, any comment there?
Well, that's a, that's a great discussion. And when I started looking at pulling this information together, the reason I presented it in the packet the way, excuse me, I presented it in the packet the way that it is to just indicate visually what streets are showing up within that PCI range for mill and overlay, so that if there was an area that really jumped out to the council, like let's say, for example, on page five, we see the Saunders area, the north and south Saunders area, those ones are all highlighted. And if council had been hearing from some constituents on, in those areas regarding the condition of the road, we could say, all right, let's take a look at some of those areas. Likewise, when we look at the Hunter's Crest area, the south, included on that southwest area map, you can see the majority of those streets are highlighted as well. So that if there were some neighborhood areas that the council wanted to focus on versus, you know, looking at, it gets kind of a little more challenging where you look up, for example, again, in the southwest area, we see the Turtle Creek neighborhood, we have that Eagle Nest Drive showing up right now. The question is, do the, are those other streets deteriorated to a point now that they might need a mill and overlay? But that was the intent, was to try to show the council where the 2017 numbers were showing for a mill and overlay, and if there was an area that we would, the council would like to focus on at this time.
So it doesn't really...
So what number PCI do we go from a mill and overlay to needing the full removal and replacement?
Um, I, let me just check here. So the, the, in the pavement report, it was roads with a PCI of 50.01 to 90.
Okay. So the ones like 87, and that aren't necessarily ones that we would want to do right now then?
Well, and that was an 87 from now, four years, four years ago, because the pavement, the pavement data was collected in 2017.
Yep.
And so it's deteriorated how much, it, you know, there isn't, there isn't a calculation to show how many points it goes down per year, because it depends on so many different factors.
Yeah, but if we were looking to do it, you, would we highlight the ones that were in the 50s then, when this was done? Or are we assuming that the ones that were in the 50s when this is done are now going to need to do the removal and the replacement?
Oh, I suppose certainly the, the ones that were in the 50s are probably deteriorating down past that 50. Now, like I said, this is, if, this isn't necessarily a hard and fast break point, where you look at a roadway with a PCI under 50 and say, absolutely don't, don't do a mill and overlay. That's where you get the pavement cores to go and say, you know, oh no, actually the, you know, they're not seeing the lamination, or, you know, they're, that it's still a candidate for a mill, mill and overlay, even if that PCI is below 50.
Those are my questions for right now.
Okay, great.
I may have more.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and yeah, absolutely. Pam, any questions, comments?
I do. John, I did appreciate all your comments, and I had the same question about the totals on the, you know, sheets. As a matter of fact, I added them up three times, thinking, what am I doing wrong? Because there's such a big difference. So I think if we could get better worksheets, I agree, it just kind of gets to be an overload of information that we're trying to put together. One thing I did notice is that there were some streets that weren't even listed on here, and I looked three times, and I apologize if I missed them, but I looked a couple of times. Loring is not on there, Hardscrabble Circle and Road. And I know these are ones that we're doing, but there are ones that we have done that are listed on here. So I think the worksheets need to be updated, where we either take all the ones that we have done and put them on one sheet, because I do like to see what we have done, I thought that was great. But then include them all, or, you know, because I, right now, it's kind of a mish of some are on, some aren't. And I did notice Feeling Trail was listed, that one we did do, and it was not noted on there. And then Minneapolis Avenue, it's on there, but it's not noted as being worked on this year. So I think the sheet, just A, needs to be updated in general, along with, I think, John's point about making it easier to kind of prioritize. And I think putting in order, a priority, really would help us a lot, as well as when we're making these decisions. The other thing is, with Jennings Cove area, that would be a project with assessments, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So to the, the cost to the city really is half of what the total is.
Yes, but we have to come up with the tot, Pam, we have to keep in mind, we have to have the total amount available, we have to dole it out. We have to dole it out.
Right, because there's a twenty-year, uh...
Yeah.
Okay.
Payback.
So I just wanted to, um, kind of note that on there, because that, that is important to note as well, where mill, mill and overlays and overlays are not assessed.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out, so.
Yeah.
So can I jump back in?
Sure. Uh, Pam, hold on, Ann. Pam, anything else?
Um, the only other thing that I think tonight, so that, um, you know, we got better information when we come back, um, is we probably should give, um, Allison, what is our budget? So that when they come back with a priority list, are we looking, you know, what kind of things can they group together that will come close to what we're looking at for a budget?
Okay, all right. Um, again, typically, we've been adding about a hundred and twenty-five thousand to our road levy. This year, we're levying seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. So if we continue on that vein, it would be eight hundred and fifty thousand next year. Um, I don't, but, um, that's again up for discussion, but that's what we've been doing over the past at least six years.
Yep.
So, um, anything else, Pam?
Nope. I think that is it. I probably have more questions, but that's it for now.
All right. Ann, we'll go back to you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Good. Good. Allison?
Oh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify, I should have noted that, um, I did not include Appendix E in its entirety. I included the portion of Appendix B that had the mill and overlay candidates. So, uh, to Councilmember, um, excuse me, um, to, uh, to, to Councilmember Mortonson's point, um, there are, there are about, I think, three other pages, um, to Appendix B that includes some of the streets that work has been done on, including, um, reclamation roads, where it was a category that I had truncated from Appendix D. So my apologies for not spelling that out in the report, but there are other streets, um, as I indicated, three other sheets, um, in, in that Appendix B, um, that didn't apply to the mill and overlay. So that's why they were included in the packet.
Okay. All right, Ann?
Okay, okay. Areas of confusion for me, um, the mill and overlay aspect to lengthen the life sounds like a very practical idea. Um, I don't understand, Allison, what you're saying when you're telling us that we can't really use the PCI numbers, because I would think you start from the bottom and the ones that absolutely have to be a reclamation, you, you do them when you have the money. And the mill and overlays have to be in a certain category. So what am I not getting right?
Um, certainly, I can, I'd be happy to explain that. So the pavement condition scores are based on a visual inspection. So the inspector goes out and takes a look at what kinds of cracks are out there, um, how big are they, how often are they recurring in a certain street section? So that gives you that, that pavement score. The other component, um, to confirm the condition of that road is the pavement coring, because the pavement corings, you're now going down, um, you know, ten inches or more to go and verify what, what's going on underneath that surface. So you see, you see the cracks on the surface and then you get the pavement corings that tell more of the story. So it's, you know, it's similar to, you know, you, you might have an ailment on, um, your, you know, something's going wrong on your body and, and you see on the surface something might be wrong, but then you go and get that x-ray, you see what's going on underneath. It's, it's kind of that situation where you, you're, you're taking your best information that you see on the surface of the street, um, and then going a little, and then literally digging down into the street and finding out, um, what's underneath there and what kind of pavement maintenance would be best suited for that street section.
Okay, so, okay. So you're not going by the PCI numbers, you're going by the other numbers?
Um, so you can use the PCI numbers as your starting point. So your PCI numbers will start to guide you on which direction you, you might want to consider a mill and overlay, for example, on the street, given its pavement condition score. And then you gather more information through the pavement coring that will either tell you, yes, that's the appropriate, um, that's the appropriate maintenance to go on there, or you can go and, and let's say, for example, underneath, um, the pavement core crumbles underneath two inches. Well, a mill and overlay, um, would not be recommended in that instance because what they're seeing underneath the surface, um, wouldn't support, um, a, a, a mill and overlay that would have good longevity.
Okay. And then do we have, like, a complaint file that we keep from our residents as to who is complaining quite a bit about various roads? And would that factor into how we pick these?
Um, I don't have anything. I tried to, but yes.
Okay, I'll try me.
Perhaps Gary does.
I was going to say, Gary probably would be the better person to answer that. And also, um, once in a while, um, people do contact councilmembers or myself and, and complain and want their, excuse me, their road moved up. But, um, so we have some, yeah, we definitely have some complaints in our packet, and you noticed that said they've had numerous complaints, I think nine complaints from the Jennings Cove area. So that might bump it up a little bit.
Okay, all right.
Allison, um, and any, any other questions?
No, thanks.
So Allison, um, and I'll just use an example, uh, this is maybe a, a good one. So a few years back, we did a mill and overlay on Crest Ridge, and we went to do the project and realized that, whoops, we can't do the mill and overlay, it's pretty much a, a reclamation, a reconstruct. And the reason for that was we didn't do the corings initially, and so, um, and then when the contractor went in, he realized that the pavement was basically disintegrating to make it, a long story short. So that's why, um, we've decided to do corings on all of our roads prior to where any mill and overlay commencing, so that we know what we're dealing with. So the first step is the visual, the second step would be the coring. Um, once the visual is done, we determine which ones we want to do, and then we have a list of the ones we want to do. Then they go out and they do the corings just to verify whether they can be a mill and overlay or, or where they're at. But here's the other question, um, I've talked to Allison in the past in terms of, so let's just say there's a mill and overlay or an overlay project, we've done the corings and all of that. If we don't do the mill and overlay and the corings, Allison, percentage-wise or multiple, um, factor, um, how much more does it cost if that road then put, gets put into the reconstruction, um, category? So let's say your road is a hundred thousand to do a mill and overlay, but we let it go too long, and now all of a sudden it becomes a reclamation project, how much more does it cost to do that reclamation?
Oh, Adam, you want to jump in here? Do you have a number off the top of your head?
Yeah, I would say anywhere thirty to forty-five percent more to do, to switch to a reclamation. You think about, um, only having a, a contractor having to, um, haul in a milling machine and mill down two inches instead of four to six inches to remove all the pavement. Um, so you're amplifying the amount of stuff they have to remove, and then instead of putting two inches of pavement back in, you're now putting four and a half inches of pavement back in. So it's not a, it's not a doubling of the cost, because a lot of that cost is the mobilization, but you're paying for more material to be removed and putting more material back in. So I would say, you know, if you said thirty-five to forty-five percent more, that would be pretty safe.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Um, Kathleen, any more questions?
Yeah, I just have one, a quick one for Allison. So I'm looking at the project planning information packet you gave me for the orientation session. It was September eighth. Um, the, it lists in there potential overlay and partial mills. Would those, for the most part, still be the main streets we'd want to look at if we're just doing the mills and overlays then? Obviously pending the coring samples, but is this like your best guess of which ones are still prime to be done now?
Sure. That's a great question. So those are certainly ones that Public Works has indicated, um, for the, for the reasons stated in there. Um, those are ones that the Public Works Department would really like us to take a look at. Um, so that could, would certainly be a good jumping off point for the council for consideration.
Great. And then Gary, is it possible for you to get us a list of which roads besides Jennings you're getting complaints on?
Yeah, I don't really track them all, but yeah, I mean, I know, I know the ones that are high, the most of them that we are getting complaints are getting done.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the, the Loring, the stone bridges, you know, the ones that are really bad are the ones getting done. I mean, we are getting just erratic from here and there about, you know, a pothole here or there, but nothing, you know, major, so. But yeah, I can, I can list it out as to what, you know, what we know of the areas being, you know, our problematic, our problematic areas.
And then I'm assuming your guys tell you which roads are getting worse when they're out on them, too?
Yeah, and I drive them a lot, too, just to kind of see it, and they're, you know, really getting bad now. So one thing that, you know, besides looking at these PCI numbers and that stuff, which most numbers are way off now, one thing, too, is to always remember the age of the road, too. You know, a lot of the roads are pushing twenty years old and have had nothing done to them. So, you know, that's another thing to consider is the age. I mean, you know, and, you know, with the, over time comes settlement, you know, around the manholes, around the catch basins, you know, I mean, you know, twenty years of settlement, that's why these roads move. If you drive through the, the Turtle Creek area or the Painters Creek area, they're the, you know, up there, uh, even starting in Hunter's Crest, you'll notice that a lot of the, around the catch basins, manholes have dipped, you know, there's, or they're raised up here or there. You know, there's a lot of movement that's taken place over the years as it's settling. So, you know, there's other factors to consider, too, and, you know, in, in looking at that. So, you know, like I say, most of these numbers I don't agree with, though they're so far off, it's, it's not even funny right now, that being the fact that they're that old, because the roads have gotten substantially worse in the last two years.
Thanks. Perfect.
John, Ann, Pam, any other comments or questions?
This is John. Um, I know we're having the study done, which would certainly be nice to have current information, but we're going to make a somewhat of a decision or just a kind of a step forward here on what we've got. I would not have a problem with just doing mill and mill overlays in that. I agree with the philosophy of trying to extend some of these into the future. Otherwise, we're always going to be behind on trying to do the reclamations, and they'll only get worse, and our budget can only go so high. Um, just looking at the color-coded ones that were on the appendix here that we got, I don't know if anybody else added them up, but just adding up those colored ones, and I did them by the areas, but the total of the three are over five million in two thousand and eighteen dollars. So, we can spend the rest of our life just doing mill and overlays, but I still think, and I'll reiterate it again, need an Excel spreadsheet, need the dollars updated somewhat, need the color field added. I could even do it once I got an Excel spreadsheet. That would allow me and any of you to sort the PCI code within the street within the color. So now we can keep the southeast and the northwest and whatever together, and we can keep the streets together, but within the street groupings, because we talked about, you know, housing areas where there's a number of streets, we can see within those streets and within that total district what the PCIs. And I know Gary said, and I'd agree, those PCIs are probably worth a cup of coffee is what they are, but it is what we've got to work with. And I personally would say, well, anything that already shows in two thousand and eighteen as a fifty-five or below, or a fifty, a sixty and below, we might not even bother to core on because they're probably already past the state. But still need that spreadsheet, so I get a comfort level with making the decision on what streets we think we want to deal with.
Yeah, that's a good point. And you're right, I don't think any of the PCI numbers are going to get better since twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So, uh, I think, um, this is, the numbers that we have are probably the best-case scenario. So, um, so what I'm hearing, um, we'll kind of wrap this up for tonight, but I'm hearing is we need the spreadsheet, as John has indicated. We would like to see, um, as Kathleen said, maybe get a feel for which areas have the most complaints or, or have complaints, um, get an update on costs, and what else? Was there anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. And assuming, and we'll have to make an assumption, but assuming, I think Pam touched on this, uh, that we increase, um, the road levy for next year, the same as we have been. So we'll, we'll go on that assumption. So is, anybody else have anything else they want to throw in here for our next discussion?
Um, just timeline, what is our, um, goal for having the decision made of which roads we're going to do?
Um, good question. Um, I think we should at least consider adding this to the next work session, because I, if my memory serves me correctly, it usually takes us at least two to three work sessions to kind of come to some conclusion. Mike Barone, is that kind of the timeline?
Uh, good question, Mayor. You know, I would defer to either Allison or Adam on their ability to put some information together for us and their recollection on timelines. I know it's been this time of year, but I've, you know, I'm going to turn to them, I think, to ask them what their thoughts are on timelines for all this stuff.
Allison?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd love to. So, um, we typically do start around this time of year for discussions. That being said, with mill, if the council's leaning towards doing a, a mill and overlay project, um, the, the timeline for those types of projects, um, is not as extensive as it is for a reclamation project, and that's for two reasons. One is we are not, we would not be doing a four-twenty-nine process if we follow the past practice of council. Um, so that certainly shortens our timeline. And second of all is with, um, mill and overlay type projects, there's a lot, um, the design component is less than a reclamation project, because with reclamation projects, we've been, for example, looking at, um...
Right.
Spot areas to put in curb and gutter and alleviate some drainage concerns, where we don't typically do that with mill and overlay projects. So we do have a little bit more timeframe with a mill and overlay project.
And I'll just add, too, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, um, for everyone's reference, the invite to the neighbors for this year's project, or sorry, last year's project, went out, um, the beginning of September. And that was an invite to, to first initiate the, the project to the residents, and that, that was tight. Um, so if we can move that up and even get that meeting, or that neighborhood meeting done in August or earlier, the more advanced notice we can give these residents, the better. But, uh, for reference, last year's project was early September.
Yeah, and that was a bit tight, you're right. So, but I do recall we started talking about this back in March, April timeframe. So I think to Mr. Barone, uh, to Mike's, uh, comment, when can you bring, um, this information back to the council? I guess that's maybe putting it more succinctly. Is it two weeks or is it four weeks from now?
Allison, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, two weeks might be a little bit of a push, um, I'll see, but we could certainly get it done if the council wants to see this back in two weeks.
Otherwise, it would be our first meeting in, um, in April. Okay, my suggestion then, if the council's okay with this, the first meeting in April, two reasons. One, um, it would give staff a little more time, but the other reason is our bids are due to be opened on the fifteenth or sixteenth of March, I believe, for our construction projects for this year. And that would give us a little bit better idea in terms of what we might have left in the budget. So we might want to then also have a discussion as to, do we want to do any mill and overlays, um, in this year? But it might give us a little more room and idea in terms of cost as well. Are you okay bringing that back then, the beginning, uh, the first meeting in April? I'll ask council first. Okay, Kathleen and Pam?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to really stress... Yeah, I just want to really stress the timeline. Um, you know, we've been, uh, these projects have really been going well with the push of getting things done really early in the prior year. I just don't want to get behind the eight ball, um, where we're scrambling. So I just want to make sure we stay on top of that.
Yeah, I, I think we can if we move it to the first meeting in April. Um, I think we'll still be okay. And John, what do you think?
That's fine, as long as I have a spreadsheet I can work with.
Okay, okay.
He is a master of spreadsheets.
Yeah. And, and any comments?
Uh, no, I'm fine with that too, and I'd like to see a spreadsheet as well.
Okay, good. All right. So I think, uh, Steph, you have good direction there?
I believe we do, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to our second item on our agenda, our nuisance property discussion. Um, Mike, do you need to give a background or intro?
Um, sure, just a short one, and then I'm going to kind of ask Ron to chime in and talk a little bit about some of the things that were in your, I guess, multiple sense, so I apologize for that. But included in your packet were, was the information from a few years ago. Um, and then when, um, Mr. Shemperlin reminded me that we talked about this last year, we dug up that information as well and included that last week on Friday. And then today, uh, in talking with Councilmember Refkin, she was asking about some of the history of this, uh, in particular, the, um, the Deer Creek Road issue. And so we have a few correspondences that were back and forth between the city with the letters written by Mr. Beatty, and then one response from the, uh, landowner out there, the land, I guess, I guess, I don't know if he's a, he's the owner's son. So nonetheless, we, I included those today, and I think that will hopefully give you a better taste of what this particular issue is out on Deer Creek. This is not a new issue, as most people know. Um, it's been an ongoing issue and it's a difficult issue. I mean, um, we've had our police officer, police department look at the, trying to find if they're running a business. You can tell from the letters, the person that lives out there denied it. Um, we weren't able to find anything, although residents think they are. Um, because there's a lot of moving parts out there. Um, and so, you know, it was, it was quite an undertaking to try to figure out how best to approach this, but um, but with, is that as a quick intro, I think I'll turn it over to Ron to talk a little bit about maybe the the Deer Creek issue, but in general, overall about some of these nuisance properties and what the city is up against going forward, if, if you decide that you want to try to eradicate them or try to bring them more into compliance. So Ron?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council, uh, following up on what Mr. Barone said, you do have a number of things in the packet that I think will, uh, inform some of the discussion tonight. I know those of you who have been around for a while have probably seen some of that material. It may be new to some of the rest of you. We have had, uh, this discussion or variations of it on a number of occasions in the past. I think most recently, it probably was focused on the, on the property that Mr. Barone mentioned, but there have been other properties in the past. Um, I, I think that the memo that Andrew Biggerstaff drafted about three years ago that was included in your material is still probably a, a very good summary to understand the, the breadth of the issue. And I think the takeaway from that memo is that their problem properties come in a number of, of varieties. Number of issues come up, and the city has a number of tools that can be used in that regard, or in, in dealing with those issues. And I think Andrew's memo does a good job outlining some of them. The two principal things though, that the city will probably most frequently rely on in dealing with what I would generally consider problem properties are zoning code enforcement. That is when there's a violation of the zoning ordinance occurring on the property, that's usually, uh, an illegal use that is occurring on the property. The other one is the nuisance law, which simply has to do with someone maintaining what is considered a nuisance on that property. There's often a, an overlap between those two, and so, uh, it, it takes some judgment as to which of those tools or what, which combination of those tools makes sense in pursuing a particular, uh, issue. The, the commonality, however, in all of these things is that enforcement is generally not inexpensive. If we can get people to comply, and, and in many cases, uh, the city is able to get people to comply relatively easily, then it's not that expensive. There are certainly people who inadvertently violate the ordinance, or, um, maybe they understand what's going on, but are quick to remedy it once it's called to their attention. Those situations, uh, are fairly easy to deal with. And most likely, you never hear about them. It's the more problematic ones that drag on and are expensive, and that's where the problem come. What we've talked about in the past is that, uh, when we meet resistance with regard to enforcement, whether it be through some sort of civil action, either a zoning enforcement or a nuisance, we're talking usually in the thousands of dollars, not the hundreds of dollars, and sometimes multiple thousands of dollars. And so it really is a policy question as to whether the council is interested in devoting the, that level of resources to, uh, particular issue. What we've talked about in the past, and I would repeat again tonight, is that if the council is interested, the first place that I would start or recommend starting is revising the city's uh, nuisance ordinance. I don't know how old that ordinance is, but it's, in my opinion, inadequate. What I, what I think was also included in your packet was a copy of a, an ordinance that I was instrumental in drafting, uh, in from Medina, now been, I think, six years, which was an update of their nuisance ordinance. I'm not even sure how current that one is, but I, you know, I've offered it to the city a couple of times as a sort of an example of what I think would be a better approach. I think the city's current ordinance is deficient in a couple of respects, but particularly with regard to the, the process issues. And so, again, um, I think this, for any of you who've been around for a while, you've heard this discussion before. And I think it comes down to a policy question as to whether, among all the other issues that you've got to deal with, just talked a minute ago, or for quite some time, about spending a lot of money on roads, which is obviously an important issue as well. Question for the council is, what kind of resources are you interested in devoting towards enforcement actions? So that, that's for, for right now, those are my only comments.
Okay, thank you, um, Ron. So I think in the past, as you said, we've talked about this, um, and we've always kind of, and I think it's also been mentioned that we should take a look at our nuisance ordinance and see if it doesn't need to be brought up to date. And I think it's always stopped there, and then nothing has happened. And so I'm wondering, I, I don't think at this juncture, uh, we have any idea what it would cost or whatever, but, um, I think that would be the question. Does the council want to take a look at our nuisance ordinance and, and revise it or improve it or update it, uh, that kind of thing? Or do you want to take a different action or no action? So I'll start with, um, with Pam.
Um, well, one of the things, uh, for me is that I'm very close to the situation, because I live on Deer Creek Road. So, um, I would like to see, um, because I know exactly what is going on over there. And, uh, this, this property was not a nuisance property. When most of the residents, uh, that built or lived here, um, you know, when they did build, it was, it was not a nuisance property. And over the last, I want to say, five years, it has become that. So, um, I would like us to see, uh, us look at our current ordinance. And a question for Ron, um, with the Medina ordinance, um, has that addressed most of the major issues with, um, those types of properties?
Yes, um, council member, I think that that has been successful. I think just having a better ordinance in place has also had a, um, a, a positive effect. But, you know, having said that, again, multiple problems, multiple approaches, and while I do think that uh, it's, it's worthwhile to update the city's, uh, nuisance ordinance, I just have to caution everybody that, that doesn't, that's not necessarily a magic bullet. And I can't guarantee that any particular property is going to be addressed successfully, even with an updated ordinance.
Okay, I do think we should take a look at at least revising and make a step forward, um, into addressing some, because this is not going to go away. It's only going to get worse. So that is my opinion on that.
All right. Um, we'll move on to John.
I compared the Medina one to the ours. And obviously, other than they're laid out differently and the, the verbiage is somewhat more robust in the Medina one, they basically, at least to me as a layperson, they both basically say the same thing, the same topics are covered, but if there's some something that can be added, that's maybe a, a legal precedent that's come down in the last three or four years, or something that Mr. Beatty would know about, or someone would know about, that could be added, that would be great. I just noted, the only thing I noted different was Medina uses the word morals somewhere in the nuisance property, and we don't have it in ours, but I don't see that applying here. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was I was wondering, not, I, I don't see it as being a zoning issue. I don't, reading through the preserve, there is nothing in there that would curtail this or say this was, you know, improper based on their response as to how the properties are being used. But I was wondering, under section or chapter nine of our city code, which is, is under vehicle and traffic, there's a section 925 that talks about abandoned and junk vehicles. And I can't believe that the owner there can say that all those vehicles are in uh, running condition. Uh, some that I drive by, see the hoods are off and it looks like the motor's been worked on, and I doubt you can get in and put a key on them and start them up. So I'm wondering if that's also an area that we should look at for some uh, relief over there.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, would you like?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, two, two things, uh, in response to Mr. Shemperlin's comments about the, uh, nuisance ordinance. I think you're right. I think, uh, some of it is, is organizational. I think the Medina, uh, ordinance lists, uh, nuisances probably in a more logical manner. I don't think that's a huge issue. I think probably the biggest difference is the procedural safeguards that are included uh, in that ordinance that we lack in ours. And that's where I would principally look to amending the, the, the Menetrista Code. You know, with, with regard to the, uh, presence of automobiles, I do recall there were a number of issues there, and I can, I can let other people respond perhaps to, to that. Um, you know, the, at least from, at least I have received or have not heard of any complaints about this property in the last couple of years. What you see in the letters that Mr. Barone distributed today, that I, I wrote in, I think it was 2018, that reflected what we knew at the time and where we were pursuing at the time. And I, I let other staff people speak for themselves, but, um, I haven't looked at the facts since then. Those are obviously old facts. They may well still pertain today, but I can't verify that at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to make sure everybody gets a chance here. Um, Ann, comments, questions?
Um, I'm open to amending what we have, if it solves the problem. So.
It may, yeah, it may not solve the problem, but I think it's, as Pam was saying, kind of a step in the right direction. Um, here's the other thought I had is, I think we should take a look at our ordinance, because I want to make sure that we can, um, prevent something from this happening in the future. Uh, so I think if we had more teeth in it or more, um, clarity on it, maybe that would help. I don't know, but, uh, maybe it would. So, um, okay, um, any, any questions, Ann?
Um, no, not right now.
Okay. Um, Kathleen?
Uh, just one question for Ron. If we amend the, um, ordinance, how does that affect properties that were there? You know, before we amended it type thing?
Yeah, um, council, that's a good question. I, I think what you're really asking about, um, is the sort of the sense of non, of, of grandfathering yet or nonconformity, which is really a land use concept. And I don't think it directly applies to the nuisance concept. So I don't know that you get any credit for, uh, the fact that you've had a nuisance in the past. In other words, I think you can, and adopt an ordinance and, um, and enforce it going forward. As I said before, I think there's often a lot of overlap between zoning violations and nuisance violations and, and, um, nonconforming, uh, legal nonconformities come up more in the context of zoning issues. So that's a, that's kind of a long-winded way of saying, I, I think we would still look at situations, even if they pre-existed any amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, the, to the nuisance ordinance.
Okay, yeah, then I have no, um, issue with amending the ordinance.
So then I have a question for staff. Um, would this go to the planning commission and would they review it and hash through it and then send it back to the council? Uh, what would be the procedure here? Uh, Mike or Ron or David?
I can take that, Madam Mayor. This is David. Um, no, this is, this is not chapter five. This is not, as Ron just mentioned, this is not the zoning ordinance. This is general city code, which goes straight to the city council for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Um, so then the next question is, when would this be brought to the council then for consideration?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ron.
Well, I can certainly have, uh, a draft back in two weeks if you'd like to see it.
That's up to council. Um, council, you want to see a draft? Would just be a draft, but do you want to see a draft in two weeks?
Yes, just Kathleen, I say yes.
Okay, and Ann?
Yes.
Okay, and Pam?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
All right. And so, uh, we'll see a draft in two weeks. I'm assuming, so another question, Ron, would that come to the work session?
Uh, Madam Mayor, you can, uh, you can do it any way you'd like.
I think I, okay, my, my opinion is bring it to the work session so we can hash through it. And then once we've kind of finalized it, if you will, then we would bring it back to a council meeting.
Okay.
So, um, two weeks, we'll see it at a, at our work session. All right. Um, any other comments, questions? Mike, anything?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything in addition to what, uh, you've discussed with Mr. Beatty.
All right. Anybody else?
This is John. Just one, one question to Mr. Beatty. In, in his, the 2018 correspondence, I forget whether it was the son or the owner inferred, or maybe stated, I don't have it in front of me, that the vehicles were used in the, within their farming, I didn't use the farming, but obviously it's an egg preserve, and we know what the code is or what that land is supposedly for, or the intent of it, inferred that that equipment was used. Well, anybody that drives by there knows that's not being used. So, I mean, if you, if that particular issue would come up, is that, I mean, that's, is that simply us stating that that is
I mean, that's, is that simply us stating that that is not the case? Are we calling a bluff or whatever it is? Obviously, that all then leads down to eventually a court issue. Is that where that would go? Counsel, Mr. Shemperlin, I, I, uh, I think that you've got that correct, which, which I think, again, I want to emphasize the point that I think amending or revising the nuisance ordinance is an important first step, but it's not a cure-all. I think the Deer Hill property is a good example of something that involved a number of issues, zoning, potentially nuisance, also the vehicles that were also, that were mentioned. And so there may be a number of approaches that are necessary. And so, again, I, I am, I'm glad that the council is supportive this time of amending the ordinance, but I do want to emphasize what the mayor said, I think that's a first step. And I think if you're going to then look specifically at that property, which I don't think staff has looked at recently because they, unless someone, uh, on staff wants to speak up and say differently, I'm not sure that staff have, has received any complaints about this in the last couple of years. I think we'd have to look at those issues again and come up with a recommendation to the council as to how to proceed against that property, which I think is a different issue, related, but a different issue than amending the, the nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, John, like I said, I'm sorry, like I said, and I'll let, uh, Paul jump in here. I think the nuisance ordinance, regardless of what happens on Deer Creek, needs to be updated or amended. Um, and when we do that, that's just a first step. Then the council can decide now what do we want to do, if anything. So it's not like we have to do more, but we can't do more unless we amend the, um, nuisance ordinance. Um, Paul?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that you made a very good point there. And, uh, so with that, I think it's important for, from a public safety standpoint to point out that I would agree that the nuisance ordinance needs to be updated. Um, there's nothing more frustrating than, uh, trying to work with something that doesn't really give us the, the teeth that we need to, to, uh, get the action completed that we, the council wants. And, uh, so with that said, there's kind of two pieces to this. Updating that nu- nuisance ordinance is really the piece that the police department uses the most. Um, that's how we get compliance from the vast majority of complaints that we get. Not only on this property in the past, but others. So updating that will, I think, uh, be a good thing for the entire city. And then with that said, the other issues are more of a civil issue. So, um, the police department uses the nuisance ordinance, if you will, to clean up the unregistered or junk motor vehicles, things like that, um, which is the most common complaint that we get at the police department. The bigger issue of stuff and junk piled, uh, on property and things like that is, is kind of that second phase, which isn't so common. But, um, so for what it's worth, uh, I think updating the ordinance is a good step. And I think somebody asked also about when we got the last complaint regarding this property, and it has been a couple of years. So we've worked pretty extensively with this property owner and his son, um, based on the complaints we got. And we were able to chip away at a number of the, uh, inoperable and unlicensed or unregistered vehicles and got those taken care of. I believe as a result of that, he also built some shielding or fencing and put a bunch of the, uh, inoperable stuff behind the fence. Uh, I understand that there's still a bunch of stuff, or it kind of comes and goes, and that's what we've been working on, but no new or recent complaints in the last couple of years.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Any, um, John, does, did that answer your questions or concerns?
Oh, I'm agree, I'm agreeable to updating it, um, I just was already looking into the weeds, of which there's a couple over there as well. I was just already looking into the weeds to see where that might go. But yes, certainly have to update the policy.
All right, all right. Um, anybody else, any other questions? Otherwise, we can adjourn and reconvene at seven o'clock for a regular council meeting. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Kathleen, I'll motion.
Thank you, Kathleen, is there a second?
This is Anne, I'll second.
Thank you, Anne. A motion has been made by Kathleen and seconded by Anne. All those in favor will signify with aye. Uh, Kathleen?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we are adjourned, thank you very much, and we'll, uh, talk to you all at seven o'clock.